We will call to order the January 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, seeing all three commissioners present. I will ask our acting comptroller, Tom Landauer, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
It's been a bitterly cold week across the country, and here in Montgomery County is no exception. This is important because we as a county are taking steps to address our unhoused population and help support all of those who unfortunately do not have a home and are sleeping on the streets. And that's more important now during the winter than any other time. But I'm thankful that we've made some great progress and we have some announcements to share today. So since the start of the new year, temperatures or wind chill have been regularly dropping below freezing, triggering code blue warnings to mobilize services that help protect unhoused individuals from serious harm. We are taking a vote later in this meeting to start an emergency hoteling program for our unhoused residents in Pottstown to provide them with a warm, safe place to stay while we and other partners and community advocates work towards permanent solutions. And this is the culmination of tremendous teamwork and groundwork with partners in Pottstown. It's a product of Commissioner Winder's leadership over the last year on this issue and Commissioner DeBello's advocacy as well for the Pottstown community. Just last month, we announced a new shelter in Lansdale in December. That came about through tremendous teamwork, cooperation, our staff, the borough, and all of the leaders who came together to make that possible. And it shows that we can make a difference on a seemingly intractable issue like homelessness. And it's truly been a united effort across the county for this project in Pottstown. And if approved, is really a great example of how we can all work together to make a difference. So before I move on to the rest of my comments, I'll invite Commissioner Winder and DeBello to express their thoughts on this.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Mckeja. Good morning, everyone. As Commissioner Mckeja said, I'm really proud that hopefully we will be voting to announce that the county intends to invest in temporary housing for individuals and families experiencing homelessness in Pottstown. We will be voting on the authorization of a lease of up to 62 rooms at the Days Inn in Pottstown. These rooms will provide a safe, warm place for residents experiencing homelessness to seek shelter, starting with those residing on the properties of Norfolk Southern and the borough of Pottstown. This initiative demonstrates the seriousness in which this county is taking and tackling housing insecurity. And I have seen firsthand what Pottstown, the borough of Pottstown, has been facing over the last several years and seeing it firsthand, especially visiting the Norfolk Southern property and talking to some of those living on the streets. It's something that is long overdue. Providing housing for our most vulnerable residents has and will continue to be a priority for this board. And we're proud to announce the new year-round shelter in partnership with Lansdale. We were proud to announce that we are opening a year-round shelter in Lansdale at the end of this year, and we're excited that we've identified this initiative as a way to bring resources to people in Pottstown. And pending a zoning variance approval from Pottstown, we will also hope to provide 24/7 onsite person-centered services to help our friends and neighbors secure permanent housing, healthcare, and other community services. Pottstown has one of the county's highest populations of unsheltered individuals. These units have the capacity to reduce the number of unsheltered individuals in the Pottstown area by up to 75%. And I'm deeply thankful to the borough of Pottstown for stepping up. I know that you all have often felt alone in this effort, and I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for your leadership in doing what's right to help some of our most vulnerable residents. And so I'd like to first invite Pottstown Borough Manager, who's been on the forefront of this issue, really helping us to think through how best to do this, Justin Keller, to say a few words.
Thank you. Am I okay here?
You're perfect there.
Good morning, everyone. We're really happy for this partnership. It comes out of a time and need for the borough. We have a permanent shelter that is approved, a 45-bed, but that's still some time out. They're progressing well through the land development process, and we needed something to bridge the gap in the interim. So that's where the county stepped up to the plate and helped us out to bridge this gap until the permanent shelter was built. And I really want to just thank Commissioner DeBello, Commissioner Winder, all the county staff that were involved, Dr. Williams. They really took a hands-on approach with this. And that kind of involvement isn't what we've always seen from the county in the past. So it was refreshing to see that. It was refreshing to see how fast this solution got implemented. It was very thorough, but it was very rapid in the manner in which it got implemented. It was clearly an all-hands-on-deck effort, and that's something that you don't always see at the local government level. So we really appreciate that. We appreciate that the county listened to the borough's concerns and really tailored a solution that was fit for us and good for our residents. So we're ready and willing to provide with whatever further assistance we can offer, and we look forward to continuing to work together with the county as we go through the zoning approval process. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Justin. We are also grateful to Opportunity House, who has been bringing critical services to our residents, and we are looking forward to partnering with you. Modesto, the president of Opportunity House, I want to invite you to say a few words. I want to thank you for your leadership on this effort.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Modesto Fiumi. I'm the president of Opportunity House in Redding, and it's been a real great past couple months working with everyone in Pottstown and the county to make this pilot program that we began in November really grow and expand to meet the needs of, as Commissioner Winder said, about 75% of the homeless population in and around Pottstown. So we're excited about this, thrilled that it's happening so quickly. I didn't think it was going to happen as quickly, but we're ready and able to step up and get this in go. And so hopefully there will be approval today, and we can move forward. So thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Modesto. And last, we'll not let Commissioner DeBello say a few words, but I want to invite our friend, Representative Joe Cerisi, who serves the Pottstown community and has been front and center in holding us all accountable in the county, but supporting this effort along the way. So I want to give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Well, thank you. I want to thank the three commissioners who have worked through this process. I also want to thank those in our community who stepped up. One in particular, one of our people who has a business in our area who helped fund this, Scott Vently at Switchpoint Foundation, who gave us the ability to be able to start this process. And with the work of Commissioner DeBello, Mckeja, and Winder taking it to the next steps to where we can do this. I know that myself and my colleague in the Senate, Senator Penny Cook, had worked for years to try and find a solution with the borough and with the county. And it wasn't until the three commissioners who sit in front of us came into office that the solutions became clearer, and we were able to move this forward with the partners in our community. This does mean a lot to the Pottstown community and the greater area, the 146th district, but to all the people of Montgomery County, Berks County, and Chester County. These are our people. They're in our state. The state wants to be able to partner. We have given money for homelessness, and we will continue to fund the solutions to homelessness. And Modesto's organization is doing a great job, and have been doing a great job in Berks County. And we look forward to continuing to work with the borough and with the county to find the solution. But this is a great first step, and I was extremely impressed a couple weeks ago when we visited the property and saw how well it was run by the organizations that were there and the people that were there. And I can't thank them all enough, and for the Pottstown community and our residents, our residents who have lived with this issue for many years and have burdened the burden of this, who now we're finding a solution for. So thank you, Commissioner DeBello, Commissioner Mckeja, Commissioner Winder. I would like to, if you'd give one opening to one of the Pottstown Borough Council members, Andrew Manostra, who came today, and would like to say a couple words. So thank you very much.
Sometimes, short and sweet is better. I know what you did took a lot of coordination, a lot of time, and a lot of hard work, and we appreciate that so very much because you heard us. We came to you with an issue, with a challenge. You stepped up to the plate, and you hit it out of the park. Thank you so very much. I don't know how to say it in any other way, but I can't express how much I appreciate what you've done there. Tom, Neil, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your partnership. And then I just, before I turn it over to Commissioner DeBello and then back to Commissioner Mckeja, I just want to thank our staff. We have a number of people that are on our team that are doing this work day in, day out. Dr. Williams, your team has done a phenomenal job in really answering the charge of us working, you know, to accelerate things. And I know oftentimes we were pushing in a way that maybe had not historically been done, but when you push, you challenge the status quo, we get things done. So I want to thank you for your leadership and the whole team. Also, Thomas, who is not here, his daughter is sick. He came on board to really own this policy area around homelessness, so he helped with the coordination of things. And so I want to thank our staff because we couldn't execute, you know, our vision if it weren't for all of you. So thanks to all that were on the project. And I want to thank Commissioner DeBello. You know, we always say we don't always agree on everything, but one thing this board does agree on is lifting our most vulnerable friends and neighbors up. And he was right there alongside us as we looked to find a solution and did a lot of great work getting all the stakeholders to the table. So Commissioner DeBello, I'd like to invite you to say some words.
That's echoey.
Was that me?
No, I don't know. Well, thank you. Obviously, you saved the best for last. It's an interesting order of events or people there, but that's okay. So there's, as mentioned, this is huge. Pottstown's been dealing with the homeless issue for many years. There's been multiple attempts previously over the years to try to do something in Pottstown, working with Pottstown directly. But what was exciting about this time is that as three commissioners, after opening up the Lansdale one, we were already moving to open up the Pottstown location. There was, as mentioned by Representative Cerisi, individuals with private investment that kind of got the ball rolling as we were working through the details to take a program or that we already have implemented in another township and basically take that and reinvent it or reutilize what we were doing there and bring it to Pottstown. And it's what actually we're going to end up doing there in Pottstown for, you know, for two to three years potentially, it goes beyond just dealing with homelessness, but it's also providing wraparound services so that the individuals that we're going to be working with that have been in these encampments that we're going to successfully move into this motel, there's the services we're going to provide to ensure that we're addressing all of their needs, whatever it may be. If it's economic, mental, addiction, I mean, there's multiple reasons why somebody ends up in a homeless situation. And they're not people that we should look down on. They're people that we should work aggressively on to help and help them through these rough times. And that's why, as commissioners, we've been working extremely hard to lift these programs up throughout Montgomery County. There's another one coming hopefully this year at somewhere else. I'm not going to say where yet, but we're already moving and looking at another one somewhere else. I mean, if we could get 90% of the homeless people or more in Montgomery County in some type of environment, I think that we've, as three commissioners, have been very successful dealing with this problem that's been here for many years. So I'm excited to be working alongside Commissioner Winder and Commissioner Mckeja dealing this. And I also want to thank them for trusting me and my background with the negotiations, working with Steve Arst and the different teams to negotiate the lease and some other things that we're doing to put the county in a real good spot. So I was really excited to be able to step in and use my knowledge and background as well. But this was a collective effort. It was a collective effort between the three commissioners. It was a collective effort with State Representative Joe Cerisi. It was a collective effort with Senator Tracy Pennycook. This was all from the state, the county, and Pottstown Borough because we couldn't do what we started out, probably just a couple months ago. We weren't able to pull this off without working directly and very closely with the Pottstown Borough, as well as Justin, the Borough Manager, looking through and presenting all the different options and looking at different ways that we could solve this problem. I know we talked about going in and starting with 62 rooms, and, you know, we're in a position that if there's almost 100 rooms there, and if we have to eventually take over the remaining rooms, we will. But I think we're in a really good spot, and I think that this is very positive for Pottstown. It's very positive for the surrounding communities. And like I said, I look forward to continuing going to the next location to deal with the homeless in Montgomery County. So again, thank you for everyone that was involved, and this was a tremendous effort, and it really was a team effort. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you again, Rep. Cerisi, for being here and your leadership. And, you know, very early on in our tenure, you raised this issue as an urgent concern. And, you know, I'm proud to see where we are a year ago. I know there's still more work to do in the state budget this year. You know, the governor's thinking about what he can really do on housing. It would be, you know, important for all of us to continue working together and find how we can move the ball forward. So thank you again to all of my colleagues. So with that in mind, I just want to highlight one report produced by our comms team, which is our year in review for 2024. And there's a few copies around the room. It's now available on the website. It's very important for us to be able to convey what we've done in our time in this first year in office, or Commissioner Winder's second year. We've made incredible advances on housing, on funding childcare, on investing in clean renewable energy, and facilitating a secure, free, and fair election in 2024. So we'll let folks know that that's out there, and we'll continue to, you know, log what we're accomplishing because it shows our residents what we're doing and gives you a direct, you know, report on all the progress that we've made on the issues that come up in these meetings and throughout the community. So please check that out. It also has our row officers as well, and details the number of accomplishments they've made throughout their offices. So we celebrated Martin Luther King Junior Day on Monday. It's important to recognize that MLK is the only private citizen to have a federal holiday named in his honor, and it's incredibly fitting, his influence on the nation, on progress in civil rights, and legal treatment of citizens is second to none. He made the ultimate sacrifice in support of justice, and our country is forever indebted to his leadership and example. Holiday is also not just a remembrance or a day off. It's become, in many communities, a day of service. And so on Monday, I visited two places where the community members came together in recognition of the MLK Day of Service. With Commissioner Winder, we went to Salem Baptist Church in Abington with the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. They led a day on economic empowerment, supporting those in need. Lots of different activities from assembling snack bags for local elementary school kids, crafting gesso blankets, and a number of community leaders coming together, including a financial coach there to share knowledge and just providing different services. I also visited Girl Scout troop at Upper Marion, and that's Lower Marion eighth grader, Upper Marion eighth grader, right? Becca Montic, who organized the Day of Service Fair. They made blessing bags for North Town Hospitality Center and gifts for patients, for pediatric patients at CHOP. They decorated cards for veterans, active-duty military, nursing homes, and built bird feeders. So they just engaged in a broad array of activities with youth to show their service and dedication to members of our community across the board. So I just want to thank Becca, who's pictured there, as well as the other youth leaders who put that together. And I'm sure you'll hear comments from my colleagues as well. I also want to announce the America 250 Commission is open, and we all know that America's 250th Birthday is next summer, and it's going to be a great opportunity for us in Montgomery County through Valley Forge Tourism and other activities to showcase our history in the region and specifically here in Montgomery County. So we are beginning the work to plan with community partners to fully take advantage of that and all the tourism that will come from it. So today, I'm pleased to announce that our applications for the America 250 Commission are now open. The commission is going to help organize that initiative here in Monca, how we plan with partners around the events and celebrations. And we're looking through partners across the board: municipalities, historical societies, cultural organizations, businesses, private citizens, anyone who's interested in helping to make those plans for 2026 and showcase the history of Montgomery County and also just what we've devised here today. It's a great opportunity to show people why Monca is a great place to live, work, and for recreation. So anyone who wants to apply to that commission is encouraged to apply by March 14. And you can find information on montgomerycountypa.com slash America 250. And with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Winder.
Great. So as Commissioner Mckeja mentioned, today was, of course, MLK Day, and despite the weather, me and my four-year-old son went out and spent our time with the lovely ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, in which I am a member. I also went to an event at the Greater Child Church in Easton. They invited me to be the keynote there. And when I think about the remarks that I gave for that program, I thought a lot about my grandmother and her experience growing up in the segregated South, and how despite, you know, all that she faced growing up during that time, she lived her life to serve. And she was a public servant in the Philadelphia school system for more than 30 years. And so I draw inspiration when I think about Dr. King's legacy and all that he fought to fight for. His fight really afforded people like me an opportunity to sit before you today. So I was honored to celebrate Martin Luther King Day in Easton as well as at Salem Baptist Church. With January coming to an end, we are also approaching Black History Month, and Montgomery County will join the communities across the nation in celebrating and honoring this year's theme, African Americans and Labor. How this theme invites us to reflect on the profound contributions of African Americans in the labor force throughout history and to recognize how their resilience and integrity have shaped our country's social and economic fabric. I want to encourage everyone to join us in commemorating this vital history and participating in these meaningful events planned throughout February by our amazing Black History Month Committee. And those events are up on the screen here. We will have something going on every Wednesday in February. Together, it's an opportunity for all of us to honor the history and reaffirm our commitment to justice, equity, and opportunity for all. I also, this week, Tuesday, with my husband and my lovely admin, Rea, we participated in the county's PIT count, which is our annual point-in-time count for the unhoused population in Montgomery County. It's an important part of the county's efforts to respond to and address homelessness in our communities. And so, you know, Tuesday was one of the coldest nights we've had this year with a low of 1 degree Fahrenheit. And so we spent time, and I want to thank, you know, all of the volunteers that were out there with us, but my husband, Rea, and I went down by the Elmwood Park Zoo and walked back in the woods where there are several encampments there. And believe it or not, we were concerned that we wouldn't necessarily find anyone to talk to, but we did talk to several people that were out in the elements about what landed them in that particular encampment. And I'll tell you, you know, we have to remove the stigma in terms of who is actually living on the streets, because when you get out and meet where they are and you talk to them and treat them as humans and learn about their stories, what we realize is, I met a guy who's been on the streets for four months. He was renting a room in Norris Town. The house was condemned. He's never been in trouble, never been on drugs, was a chef, had worked at civil organizations as a janitor, and just fell on hard times and couldn't find a new place to live. We sat for, I guess, 15, 20 minutes just talking about his experience, listening to him, having empathy for his plight. And so I want to encourage everyone, you know, if you want to give back your time and talent, participating in our annual count is one great way to do it. It was my first time doing it. And, you know, for those of us that have a warm home to go to every night, just taking one night for a couple of hours to meet some of our vulnerable friends and neighbors will make all the difference in the world in changing hearts and minds. So I was glad that I was able to participate in that. A couple more things for me. January is School Board Appreciation Month. Commissioner DeBello and I will vote on school boards. I serve on the Norris area school board, and Norris, the Norris area community had done so much for me growing up, and I wanted to be able to give back to that school community. And I want to just appreciate everyone. And I know Representative Cerisi served on the school board as well. And when we think back to our days as school directors, school directors have the most thankless jobs. It's so challenging to navigate various stakeholders, the challenges when it comes to underfunded and unfunded mandates. And these are people that are just volunteering their time to serve as school directors. And so I just want to give a shout out to all of our school directors throughout Montgomery County for all the work that they do. So I'm actually going to speak on the inauguration. So we know a new administration entered into the White House this week. I want to wish President Trump and J.D. Vance all the best as they enter into their new term. And as commissioner, I do feel a sense of responsibility to speak out when policies and actions from the highest level of government threatens the values that some of us hold dear. The recent executive actions taken by the new administration are deeply concerning to me, not speaking for the board entirely. They target some of the most vulnerable populations and dismantle diversity, equity, inclusion efforts. And I would not be here today if it weren't for the sacrifice of so many that have come before me. And so I want to just remind the community of our nation's history because many people are trying to erase that. And so, did you know, there's black people who are legally segregated, denied jobs, housing, and the right to go until the late 1960s? My mother was born in 1947. One woman couldn't get a credit card in their own name until 1974. People with disabilities were locked out of the workplace until 1990, and gay and lesbian couples couldn't marry the people they loved until just 10 years ago. And I wouldn't have been able to marry my husband, who is Caucasian, if it weren't And I wouldn't have been able to marry my husband, who is Caucasian, if it weren't for loving versus the state of Virginia. What DDI policies do is acknowledge our history to create a fairer and more inclusive workplace that benefits everyone. And so I will continue to advocate for those in our county who may be impacted by these actions and use my voice to support all efforts that allow Montgomery County residents to feel safe and to thrive. And I want to thank the Biden-Harris administration on their work as they end their historic term. And I reflect in the way that they fought through the most vulnerable, welcomed those who have historically been on the margins, and paved the way for many voices who were once silenced to be heard. And I want to especially thank Vice President Kamala Harris, who made history as the first black woman and Asian American to hold that office. That representation was an inspiration to people like me. And what that tells you is that black and brown children across our country can dare to dream and be anything they want to be. And so I want to thank them for their leadership. And again, all the best to President Trump and J.D. Pence, as they represent all Americans. And so lastly, way to go winners. Let's end on a positive note. So I have the pleasure of announcing, way to go winners this time. Maria Braccio-Riley is a senior district clerk, District Court 38-1-10. Maria has been described as the light of the office and a very special part of our team. Congratulations to Maria. Amanda Brown, our deputy coroner from our coroner's office. Amanda is thorough in her commitment to supporting those the office serves, collaborating with others to ensure the best possible outcomes for all. Frank Tizalis, Frank, where are you? Is Frank here? Oh, there he is. Yeah, hi. Yeah, hi. Frank might be surprised to hear this. You can blame Robbie for keeping this secret. As a part of the security team, Frank is courteous, dependable, and especially goes out of his way to help translate for our Spanish-speaking individuals. So let's give Frank a round of applause. Thank you. Amber Just Missy, assessment supervisor from our Office of Aging Services. Amber is a dedicated member, serving our older residents of the county. I'm told that Amber never hesitates to assist no matter what the circumstances, whether she's asked to connect with an individual in their home or at a hospital, she meets residents where they are. And then finally, Kathy Stevenson, I see you there in the back. Can I stand up? Kathy has been with the county for over 40 years. Kathy started with the Recorder of Deeds office after graduating high school in 1982. I believe that you and I share something in common, as we're both products of the Norris area public schools. Kathy joined the Sheriff's Office in 2008, and thanks to Montgomery County's Tuition Assistance Program, along with the Montgomery County Community College Credit Shield Program, she earned an accounting degree from Philadelphia University. When she's not reconciling the Sheriff's Office bank account, which, God bless you, that's important. Kathy's involved in many community events and church activities, loves playing bocce, and has seen the Rolling Stones more than 25 times. I say that Kathy takes us to the next Rolling Stones concert. So congratulations to you, and thank you for our four years of service to our county. So we're going to invite, let's give Kathy a round of applause.
I'm up. Well, thank you. Always a great job, you guys do. So where do I start? Let's see, school board appreciation. I want to start there. I agree with Commissioner Wyner. School board members, that's probably, it is the most, I think she said, one of the most, it is the most thankless job that you could have as an elected official, and it's completely 100% volunteer. There is no stipends, there's no nothing. Every now and then, you may get a good parking spot for a football game or the event at the high school, but for the most part, it really is a thankless job, and you have to deal with so much, especially when parents come in, they have a lot of desires and needs, and there's, I mean, there's just so many different aspects of school board members, the budgeting process, the unfunded mandates, which is always extremely a challenge. And I had the opportunity to serve Representative Suresh on the school board. We served almost eight years together, so serving with him was probably the biggest challenge of being on the school board. But we won't go there. But it is, and I have to tell you that the School Board Appreciation Month in January is probably the one time as a school board member where you sit back and you actually do feel good about everything that you do and everything you had to deal with, because you're appreciated for just that one month. And then, but we might tell you, February comes around real quick and back to being in that thankless position. So I too want to commend all of the school board members throughout Montgomery County and Pennsylvania for what they do, volunteering their time, which could be five to 10 hours a week in some instances. So it's just a tremendous undertaking, and I want to congratulate them on their efforts. So, let's see, we talked about the hotel program. So I want to mention that there's going to be a veterans business event coming up on February 13. That's put on by a Commerce Department, and we'll, so they will be hosting veterans and business seminars. Dennis Mailer, who heads up our Office of Veteran Services, will join, will be joined by Senator Tracy Pennekog and a local score small business mentor of the seminar. The event is designed to offer veteran entrepreneurs good resources for developing their businesses, including business planning and strategy, sustainability, and marketing. So if you are a veteran, and we do thank you for your service, you reach out, and we would love to see you attend that event on February 13. You can find information regarding that on our county website. Martin Luther King, as mentioned, was a tremendous individual, and he endured a lot by trying to make changes. And, you know, what's most important, that we recognize Martin Luther King every year, is that he had, I mean, not to be, as a pun, but he did have a dream, and he worked hard and wanted that dream and that vision to become a reality. And sometimes, I don't know if we're trying to erase history, but we do sometimes change history, and I think it's really important to go back and truly understand who that man was and what he fought for and how he endured so much through the years that he was trying to make a difference for not only one group, but for all groups in the country. So it's very important that we do recognize Martin Luther King annually. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to attend any events on Monday, Martin Luther King Day this year, because I was, had the opportunity, I was invited to attend the inauguration in Washington, and let me tell you, it was cold. So coming back here is a heat wave, but it was cold. And putting politics aside, because I generally try not to go down that road sitting here, but putting politics aside, it's unbelievable to be able to attend and participate and be part of such an important, important ceremony and activities for, you know, three days. I got to attend swearing in, I got to attend some of the inaugural balls and some other events. And I encourage anyone, no matter who's elected, it doesn't matter, I encourage everyone to at least try to go one time. Just experience what's going on, because it's, you know, we may not necessarily agree with the president that's getting sworn in that year, but as from an inauguration standpoint, it's just an amazing part of our country. And to see the people come from all around the United States and globally to participate in these events, it's just extraordinary. It's just, I remember it for the rest of my life. I'm not sure I would do it again, because we did a lot of walking. I think one day, we walked almost 10 miles in like two-degree weather, because a lot of, all the roads around all the venues are closed and shut down, so you really can't get around the city itself or on DC. And for those, if you've ever been in DC, getting around DC is not easy to begin with. So I've thrown the inauguration on top of that, and it just makes it that much harder. But it was, it was well worth the experience, and I'm proud to have been there, and I was proud to be invited to participate in it, and I look forward to what's ahead of us. And I, you know, I may not agree with everything all the time, no matter who it is, but, you know, from my perspective, I think it's important that we work together as a community. As our three commissioners, we've been committed to being a team, and when we don't agree on something, we don't agree, and then we move on. And I think that's the best that we could do for Montgomery County. I will always encourage that and hope that we continue as a team, working together, no matter who's in what administrations. It doesn't matter, because the three of us are representing over 865,000 residents in Montgomery County. And when they have issues, they don't care about party politics or anything like that. They're looking to us to try to help them. And we started this meeting off earlier, talking about the Pottstown Hotel Program for the homeless, and that's a prime example of several elected officials representing different parties coming together, putting everything aside, because that's not important. What was important is we were driven to work together to solve a problem in Pottstown. And I look forward to, look forward to the success of that program. I look forward to continually working with Commissioner Wyner and Commissioner LaTisha. Not only that, but the next one that is, that we're starting to, I don't know, I want to say cook up or whatever it is. And I did forget, I see Tamara Williams sitting there, and I forgot to mention her, because she was also, did a tremendous job in pulling, with her staff, pulling this success together. So that's what's most important, and I think that's what I will continue to do. We may not always agree on things that may happen in the future, but I'm here to represent Montgomery County. So thank you.
Before we move on to public comment, I'll ask Ann Leatherbewer to come up with an update on the Monca 2040 rotation.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Okay. Thanks so much for having me here this morning. This is a report that the Planning Commission puts together each year, and perhaps you can look at it as a different spin on the year-end review report that you mentioned earlier. We reach out to various county departments to ask them how their work in the prior year, in this case, 2024, and what they anticipate doing in 2025 has helped to implement the county's current component of the plan, Monca 2040, a shared vision. Next slide. We've been implementing Monca 2040 for the last 10 years. I think it's been a really successful plan, and it is, I think, broad enough in its scope that it is something that all of our county departments are implementing in a variety of ways. So I'm just going to run through some of the highlights of this report. Next slide. So the report is organized around the three themes of the plan. The first theme is connected communities, that people want to be connected and a part of their broader communities. And one of the key roles of the county is to help those connections happen. Next slide. The goals of connected communities are to encourage collaboration and partnerships among governments and other entities, to improve transportation quality and expand options for workers to get to their jobs, to expand and connect our county trails with other open space assets, and to support strong downtowns and community destination. Next. So in 2024, the county did so much work that fits into this category, not just from the Planning Commission, but across departments. We funded 13 new projects through our Monca 2040 Implementation Grant Program. That grant program is entering into, it's into a new round of funding that was just announced, and so we are open for more applications to fund more projects at a local level. We continue the county's DEI speaker series, and we continue progress on the construction here in Norristown, the Justice Center construction, while releasing our FBI for the Erie Street Prisons. We have a lot of health and human services partnerships that are listed into this, in this report, and these are just a couple of them. The Health and Human Services Department conducted a community health assessment with input from more than 3,300 residents. The county's Student Policy Council launched its Leadership Committee, and just the other day, had its first general membership meeting. We recruited new agencies to become members of Pure Way Home Continuum of Care. We partnered with the Literacy Council of Norristown to promote early childhood literacy and to support pre-K programs across the area. And something that is interesting to me is that we enhanced the county's wastewater surveillance system to track disease incidents by testing for influenza and RSV. Next slide. Lots of transportation infrastructure improvements. Notably, we completed Section 2 of Bridge Pike and completed reconstruction on several county bridges. Pictured here, I believe, is the ribbon cutting at the Mill Creek Road Bridge, but we completed several other bridges as well, and installed nearly eight miles of new on-road bike lanes in cooperation with some of our municipal partners. Trail construction and open space planning efforts continued. We completed construction of the Pennycap Trail in Roundbridge to connect that trail completely to Philadelphia. We secured nearly $40 million in federal funds for the cross-county trail project in the fiscal year 2025, TIPS, that's the Transportation Improvement Program. We also completed architectural and landscape planning documents for the Triad Junction Center. That is just down the street from here at the junction, literally, of the Scoop River Trail and the Chester Valley Trail. That will be a huge asset when it's completed. And we received grant funds from the state's local share account for money to go toward additional cross-county trail construction. Next. Also in 2024, we supported strong downtowns and community destinations. The county's CDVG funds through the Office of Housing and Community Development supported a whole host of programs and activities, sidewalk constructions, and other accessibility improvements. We continue to support the Green Resource Center at the Norristown Farm Park. And the Planning Commission oversaw ongoing comprehensive planning projects. We completed a comprehensive plan for Upper Morland Township and had ongoing planning work take place in the Central Park region, as well as Cheltenham Township. We continued our design work in places like Lansdale with their railroad plaza redesign, and had community planning work taking place to do downtown revitalization plans and promote transit-oriented development. And last but not least, we performed an acid inventory through our recovery office of existing community facilities through the Norristown Community Facilities Project. In 2025... In 2025, we're going to keep this work going. We're going to promote ongoing Health and Human Services partnerships, continue funding projects through our MOCO 2040 Implementation Grant Program, continue bridge reconstruction work and other road improvement projects, and beacon construction at the Trail Junction Center. Next slide. The next theme of the MOCO 2040 Plan is Sustainable Places, that the county is full of wonderful neighborhoods and communities and that we want to sustain these places in the long term. Next. The goals of the Sustainable Places theme is that we want to support a modern, resilient, green and energy-efficient infrastructure network, improve our stormwater management, conserve natural resources in other sensitive areas, have more opportunities for county residents to exercise and have healthy lifestyles, support housing choices, enhance community character. Next. In 2024, the county addressed improving water quality in a variety of ways, including advancing revisions to the Lissa Hickin Creek Water Quality Improvement Project. We continue to preserve open space and improve county parks. Notably, we provided funds towards the acquisition of a new debt property in 2024. And our county's Parks Office continued work for opening Sunrise Mill as a public historic site. We continued work on creating a hydroelectric facility on the Norristown Dam. And we committed, we completed a renewable energy and energy conservation model ordinance. Next. Also in 2024, we supported a variety of housing needs. The county concluded its emergency rental assistance program. This was a financial assistance program that started during the pandemic and over the years, 2022 to 2024, provided over $122 million to nearly 10,000 households to help with rent and other emergency needs. We also established additional Code Blue emergency shelters as well as worked on some of the things we've already talked about this morning. We promoted access to healthy lifestyles with the Ninth Annual Montgomery County Trail Challenge. We expanded the county's food and medicine pilot program and increased health and wellness programs in the senior centers. The county worked to enhance community character through the CDVG program, issued community alerts related to extreme heat and extreme cold as well as air quality concern days. We transitioned through our Office of Public Safety to Next Generation 911 and completed a year-long county-wide emergency medical service study. Next. In 2025, a lot of these programs will continue being implemented. We are going to initiate the personal and street flood reduction study. We will submit that water quality improvement program for approval and implementation. We're going to begin a county-wide similar planning update. It will continue a lot of, our household hazardous waste events, the county's trail challenge, will continue to preserve, which I will come back up here to talk about in a couple of minutes, and continue implementing the county's Homes For All Plan. Next. Last theme of this plan is a vibrant economy. A vibrant economy is really critical for all places and with a vibrant economy, residents can earn and spend more and governments can continue to make needed infrastructure improvements, businesses can continue to grow. Next slide. So the goals of our vibrant economy theme are to improve transportation access to businesses, to encourage development and transformative investment where we already have infrastructure, to attract and retain businesses that are here in the county, to flexibly adapt to changing market conditions and to facilitate the marketing of the county and its assets. Next. In 2024, we continue to move major transportation projects ahead. Besides the Ridge Pike project that I already mentioned, we continued construction and design on the Route 309 Connector Project, Phases Two and Three respectively. Pottstown's Kym Street Bridge is another major project that went to construction. This is a bridge that's been closed since 2010 and is something that I think a lot of Pottstown residents are looking forward to see completed. It will be completely rebuilt once it's done. We also completed Phase One of the SRPRI Service Development Plan. That's a rail project potentially to reconnect rail after getting. Tourism and hotel stays, something that the Planning Commission thinks about often because it's such an important part of our local economy. Tourism is continuing to grow since the pandemic and continues to recover both in people coming here to visit and money spent here in the county. We continue to invest in the county's businesses and workers while we continue to adapt to the changing market. We approved two CPAs projects in Russia, supported a lot of grant submissions to the RACP program, began work with a consultant on a strategic plan for business and community engagement, and held the always popular and well-attended careers of tomorrow expo. In 2025, we will continue to work on some of these transportation projects I just mentioned as well as start construction on a Pennsylvania turnpike ramp at the Fort Washington interchange. We're going to ramp up, we talked a little bit about America 250 efforts here in the county. That's going to ramp up next year and will continue to partner with the Valley Forge Tour, the convention board on that, and continue capacity building with the Norristown Chamber of Commerce. Next, just a couple more slides. One of the things we do in this report is we look at how growth and development syncs up with the policy maps that are in our planning. So we look at where housing has been built, in this case, and look at if it is being built in our growth areas or the parts of the county that we think are most capable of handling new growth. And in this case, nearly all of the housing that was built in 2023 has not yet tallied the numbers for 2024. Nearly all of it, I think 92%, was built in our growth areas or designated our development potential areas. Similarly, next slide. Even more of our non-residential construction was built in those areas that we saw as being appropriate to build, 99%. Next slide. We do something similar with our transportation projects. Our company had some plan back in 2015, outlined transportation projects that already had funding attached. That's what we mean by program. And we've charted their completion over time. So of all of the things that we sent out to try to keep tabs on in 2015, nearly everything is either in design or has already been completed. Only those projects that are gray have not yet started. And additionally, next slide, we laid out projects that were our vision projects, things that would be a great project to accomplish but didn't yet have funding attached at all. Even some of those projects have moved forward and gone to completion. So these are things that, as we work on MOCO 2015, we'll be reevaluating and coming up with a new list of projects that we hope to move forward in the future. And with that, I think that happy to answer any questions, any of you have, as this work. I look forward to seeing all of the amazing things that county will accomplish in 2025.
Do you have any, do you have any questions?
I, I thank you for a very detailed report. It just demonstrates all of the accomplishments and all the things that you guys have been working on. It's full, it's a full list of stuff. I mean, and it's amazing that you did it all in 12 months. But I'm glad you brought up the Kym Street Bridge because that was, I see, since our, our Pottstown friends are still here. As mentioned, that bridge was closed since 2009, 2010. That was something that when I pushed getting, when I came commissioner last year, that was one of the projects that I really worked hard to push, to move that forward. And I'm glad again, as our, as county commissioners, we did everything we could to move that project forward because it's been way too long to, that bridge has been closed. Trying to plan it groundbreaking, the war, hopefully the end of this month. The work has begun. I mean, they started to clear out the staging areas for equipment and stuff. So people have come up to me and said, oh, it's never happening, it's never happening. Well, glad to report that it is happening and it's happening now. It's a multi-year project, but it is actually underway and it will be, I believe, to be completed in three years. And again, the success of that project is not only county investment and county staff and all that, but as well as the monies received, working with the state representatives, Sarisi and others, to help fund that project, to redo that bridge. It's such, it's such an important part, a important bridge between Pottstown and Chester County, a connection point over the river. It's really, it's extremely important, especially for Pottstown, for people to be able to come into Pottstown more. With all the revitalization that's going on, Pottstown is going through a rebirth, which is awesome. And this bridge, when completed, is really going to help with that as well. So it's, we're great. We're very happy that that project's moving forward and we'll be really happy when we get some type of groundbreaking scheduled soon so that we could go up there and give the people, Pottstown and Chester County, opportunity to celebrate that this project is moving forward.
I have one question for you and thank you for the comprehensive presentation. And just for everyone here, the Planning Commission does tremendous work, as you can tell, on all aspects of infrastructure, including bridges, but also parks and trails, which are used by, I'm sure you have the stats, tens of thousands if not, if not more of our residents, actually many more. And one of the things that, you know, I am concerned about is the loss of federal funding. I know there was an executive action on freezing the infrastructure funds. If you can let us know how that might impact. For example, there was 200 million in the carbon reduction program that was going to circuit trails across the counties. Is that something we should be concerned about? Is that, you know, I think there are going to be a lot of moments in the coming years where we need to reassess what funding sources we have. And I know that was quite substantial and historic. So I don't know if you have an immediate answer, but if you can.
If you don't, have an immediate answer, but we can definitely circle back to that.
Okay, that would be one. And just for my fellow commissioners, I've been talking to Scott France and the team about how we can best support any of the projects you're talking about when it comes to supporting housing construction in the places where it makes the most sense and transit-oriented development? And are there ways that we can support municipalities that are making decisions to increase the housing supply at a time in which, you know, there's a dramatic need for that? And can we do so in a way that supports main streets and building mixed-use development in, you know, our, our main streets across the county? And I know that's something the state is also thinking about. So just to raise that for our rep and whenever there's a state-related issue, I will. You know, that, that's something that, from a planning perspective, is what we need to be doing, is how do we support building the housing supply in places where it makes sense and create active transportation options, whether it's sidewalks, bike paths, those and all that. So people, you know, are able to have more housing affordable or just any market rate housing will increase the supply and make it more affordable. That that's something the commission's working on, so.
Yeah, so I, I mean, what I would say is you look at, in the spirit of housing inventory, you look at what's been done in Bridgeport and they really transformed the riverfront. Like, I feel as though we have a responsibility as Norristown, being the county seat, right? Not saying that we should, you know, we should absolutely pick strategic communities that we could partner with. But I'm particularly keen on, you know, we have this Justice Center going up across the street. We should really be strategizing with our partners in Norristown on, to Commissioner McKees's point, how do we create, you know, housing inventory, retail, to really transform some communities that have been struggling? Yeah, I should have to hear that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Actually, I should say that I toured the Justice Center yesterday. So very excited and we'll get an update on that soon, but there's going to be. Yeah, I think it will absolutely change the possibilities for mainstream. All right, so we have two public comment periods as a reminder. The first one is, there are comments related to those resolutions, bids and contracts that are on the agenda. So please indicate what agenda item you would like to comment on. And then at the end of the meeting, which is not too much later, we can take public comments on any topic. So any topic that's germane to the board. So do we have any comments for the agenda?
David Morgan.
My commissioners, I'm David Morgan from Ambler. And related to the agenda item about the housing plan, I think that's really very fine. It's good to keep in mind cost to the taxpayers. And also, as a public comment from Texas who came here, an African-American woman was talking about pathways to employment so that people find that they can eventually get housing, as we're discussing now, of projects in the area that are affordable for them and that they can find jobs and meaning in life because she knew if someone was 15 years in a shelter and languishing there, the best help people to avoid that, but have them find pathways to employment. Then I have related to the items today. Number one, MB, is about swing space in one Montgomery Plaza related to the Justice Center, So that cost, I was wondering if we can maybe tailor that to amend that so that it's lower somehow because we have facilities upstairs, I've seen courtrooms upstairs, often unused on the 10th floor when I was going to the law library. So I'd like to know if we can reduce that. It seems very expensive. Justice Center furniture, number three, goes eventually to a revised contract amount of 1.8 million. I heard at one time a three-point some million or a few meetings ago. So I was wondering if that could be economized. And also the artwork for a total of $175,000 from the students. I was wondering if there's somehow that teachers can come up with, through their woodworking projects, have frames for wonderful student-made pictures which wouldn't cost 1975,000. And then we have also uniforms of 300,000 on page, on number 14. So that, I just went from four to five to 13 with 300,000. Seems expensive to me. So we know that we had a tax increase and we've had the problem in Montgomery County, I see, is a chronic problem of overspending in tax increases. I reviewed with sending to our CFO and to Mr. Fortesiac as well, copied and of Mr. Field, as I see the line A of our tax bills that come in April, I see totaling over five years, almost 52% in five years, increasing taxes. So taxes pressure on people trying to make ends meet with their food, their, their rent and other things. And this past entrepreneurs, it's, everyone has to face these costs today with inflation. So I asked that you really look at the document I sent from Bucks County to save, and dated December 20th, 2023, about how they're addressing by having low debt, reducing debt. And I'm going to comment about this more in the meeting at the general.
Thank you. Any other comments? So we will move on to approval of the minutes from November 14th, 2024, and January 9th, 2025. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 14th, 2024, and January 9th, 2025 of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meetings. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. So we have a number of resolutions, starting with an authorization of planning assistance. Do you have, are we going to help?
Are you doing these individually or are you doing these all together?
That's what I was just looking at, actually. One through four. Okay, I'll start with number four because that's why everyone's here. So. Number, resolution number four is the authorization to enter into a lease agreement, JSK Pottstown LLC for interim housing in Pottstown. And I'll ask Dr. Williams to come up to provide an motion there.
Good morning and thank you, Dr. Tamara Williams, Deputy Chief Operating Officer and Director of the Department of Health and Human Services. As noted this morning, we've worked collaboratively with Pottstown Municipal Leadership to plan for the implementation of a temporary hoteling and shelter program to serve individuals and families currently experiencing homelessness in the Pottstown region with priority to the GIMMIS. be given to individuals residing in the region's largest encampment site. A little bit of context and background for who will be served by this program. As we know, homelessness is associated with many physical health, behavioral health, and safety risks. The lack of access or inconsistent access to health-related services can exacerbate pre-existing conditions, leading to greater healthcare costs. Many unhoused individuals suffer from co-occurring medical issues, as well as mental health and substance use disorders, paired with social factors such as lack of transportation, which increase their risk for poor health outcomes and limit their ability to work and to thrive. Additionally, many unhoused individuals can't afford private commercial insurance and are either uninsured, underinsured, or have Medicaid. And thus, it's vital that we have services, such as those under HHS, to cover temporary gaps in care, to get people back on their feet, and on the road to living healthy, safe, and connected lives. Providing temporary housing with support as a gateway to permanent housing is associated with positive economic development, lower healthcare costs, and less strain on certain local resources. The Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services and the Your Way Home Program have a proven track record of demonstrating that housing leads to an increase in income and earnings, a decrease in likelihood of return to homelessness, and decreased use of emergency services. In implementing this temporary housing program, Montgomery County and Pottstown Borough Administration will make a positive contribution to the long-term health and economic well-being of the Pottstown regional community. I want to emphasize that the primary purpose of this program is to provide temporary shelter and supportive services with the ultimate goal of connecting people to a permanent housing situation without returning to homelessness. So while this will achieve the short-term goal of providing a place for people to live temporarily, the long-term solution will require attainable permanent housing and ongoing, fully-funded Health and Human Services for this population. The proposed program, the program is proposed to begin operating upon conditional zoning approval and ending upon opening of a permanent shelter located in the Pottstown region. So we are seeking approval of a resolution to open a new year-round, short-term supportive housing program in Pottstown for regional residents experiencing homelessness, and to enter into a lease with JSK Pottstown LLC for their property at the Days Inn Pottstown, located at 61 West King Street.
Thank you, and I will make a motion to approve the resolution as described by Dr. Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comment?
I just, I just have one quick comment. I think we, as a county, we do ourselves a real disservice, because what we're doing in Pottstown is not just about housing. What we're doing in Pottstown is that there's, could be up to 150-plus individuals that need help, and they need help for many reasons. It could be mental health, it could be addiction, it could be economic, it could be, that's what we're doing. And what the long-term goal is, yes, we want to put them, get them back housed, but really the long-term goal is to provide the services necessary to help these individuals so that their lives become better. And along the way, one part of that is to eventually successfully have housing available to them long-term. But I think that we do a disservice when we spend a lot of time talking about housing, because we're doing so much more with this program than just providing temporary housing.
So if I could just, you know, add, it's, you know, just thinking about the guy that I was talking to at the pick count on Tuesday, right? Like, when you think about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? You think about housing as the starting point, right? But I understand what you're saying, Commissioner DeBello, but, you know, this is just, like, someone's ability to be able to raise their head, you know, in a room or in a bed that they can call their own is the starting point, right? And so, and we haven't had that as a starting point for a very long time. And so, I think when we're, you know, when we're announcing these things, we can do the job of talking about the wraparound services and really blowing that out a bit, so residents understand that this is, this is supporting the whole person, and I think that's what Commissioner DeBello was referencing here. But when you think about the hierarchy of needs of us as people, housing is a basic need. So, and so I think that's why we lean into, you know, the housing part as a starting point.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but if we, by addressing the whole person, people aren't ready sometimes for housing until we address other issues. So that's, that's what I'm trying to point out, is to say, yes, housing is a piece of this, and we want to get them housed, but for them to successfully be in a house and be able to stay in that house, it requires a lot of other things, a lot of other services, and that's all I'm trying to point out. I'm not against what we're doing, I'm not against housing, I'm not saying any of that. What I'm saying is that we should just be talking more holistically about everything that we're doing as a county to provide services for these individuals.
Yeah, my final comment would just be that, what I particularly appreciate about this is that we're meeting the urgency of the need that people are feeling with, with the action that we're taking. And I, you know, one of the things that we've talked about in terms of what the state could support is master leasing, and is that essentially what this is?
That's an interesting way to sort of frame it. I mean, it's a bit different than our master leasing program. I would say that's a sort of separate endeavor, but somewhat related. I mean, the concept is similar in that both types of programs will provide for places to live until later ahead, as Commissioner Wynder said. I think the master leasing program, as a part of our larger plan, will help us to secure sort of permanent spaces for people to be, whereas this is somewhat of a more temporary solution.
But the idea is that we immediately find a place, lease it, while we're seeking more permanent housing that would require the zoning changes and such. Okay, any other comments? All right, with that, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution passes unanimously. Okay, with that, we will ask our community planning manager, Eric Gerald, to join us to talk about authorization of planning assistance contracts.
Which one?
Resolution one. Resolution one.
Okay.
But thank you, commissioners. So there's four planning assistance contracts for consideration as part of this resolution. All four are three years in length, beginning January 1, 2025, going through December 31, 2027. And in this case, all four are actually renewals of existing contracts. Looking at the resolution, the first contract is Upper Gwinnett Township. Total cost for that is $75,284, split evenly between the township and the county at $37,642. For Upper Gwinnett, we're continuing the implementation of their comprehensive plan. We're also going to be helping with the master plan for their Castle Park Playground. Rockledge Borough is the second one. Total cost for that contract is $62,304, split evenly again between the borough and the county at $31,152. We're going to be providing park planning and design for borough park improvements, and providing some grant writing assistance as well. For Lower Frederick Township, total cost of that contract, $70,092, again, split evenly at $35,046 between the county and the township. We'll be doing some planning and zoning work for Zieglerville Village, as well as some township-wide trail planning. Last contract is Marlboro Township, with a total cost of $59,708, again, split evenly at $29,854. We're going to be doing a full rewrite of their zoning code and doing some complimentary updates to their subdivision land development origins.
Thank you. Any questions? Make a motion to approve resolution number one, as described by Mr. Gerald. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. And Levitt Gruberger will join us again in a minute, talk about farmland preservation.
Okay, so, this is something that we do each year. The resolution that is before you is to certify the county's budgeted allocation of funds towards the farmland preservation program. This year, we are committing the sale of $1,120,882 toward the farmland preservation efforts. This will go to match what the state's allocation is to us. $4,000 of the dollars from the county's commitment will go toward the Montgomery County Conservation District to assist with the annual inspections that we do on the dirt farmland.
Okay, any questions? So I'll make a motion to approve resolution number two, as described by Ms. Ann Levitt Gruberger. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comment? So I guess I need to say who was seconded by. Said by Commissioner DeBello. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next resolution.
So this is a resolution similar to what Eric just presented to you. It is a short-term contract to provide school district enrollment planning services to the Burkingham Valley School District. This is something that we offer on a pretty regular basis to school districts across the county. This contract has a total cost of $13,770 with a 75% to 25% split, so it will be $10,327 for the school district, supplemented by $3,143 from the planning commission as a match. This is a contract that will run from February 15th of this year to conclude by the end of May 1st.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number three, as described by Ms. Levitt Gruberger?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Said by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Russell Krotz will join us to discuss approval procedures concerning county signatories.
Good morning. My name is Russ Krotz. I'm an assistant solicitor in the county solicitor's office. The county code authorizes the commissioners to enter into contracts for goods and services on behalf of the county. The purpose of this resolution is to authorize other county officials to execute contracts that are over the minimum purchase amount requiring public bids. Specifically, the county's chief operating officer will be the primary authorized county signatory, and the county's deputy chief operating officers or county solicitor shall be authorized signatories if the county COO is absent or unavailable. All contracts over the statewide minimum purchase amount will still be carefully reviewed, contemplated, and voted on by all county commissioners, and then reviewed and approved by the county solicitor's office for legality. This resolution will simply streamline the signing process so that unnecessary administrative burden can be reduced. As such, the county solicitor's office is recommending approval of this resolution.
Great. So, is there a motion to approve resolution number five, as described by Russell Krotz?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gerald Wynder. Is there a second? Said by Commissioner DeBello. Any more comment?
So I have a quick comment, although I just recently got this resolution. When I read through it, when I, when I read paragraph three, the last two sentences, it says, well, I started to think, oh, it's all one big sentence. But it basically talks about which have been reviewed and approved by the county solicitor's office, including those matters which have been approved by county commissioners. By, this, including mean, in legal terms, does that mean all, anything over the minimum will be voted on and approved?
Correct. Everything, everything over the statewide minimum purchase amount will be voted, contemplated, voted on, and approved by commissioners before it comes to the county's, the county solicitor's office for legal approval.
Because including gives you the impression that there's something else.
No, this is just for contracts over the statewide minimum purchasing amount.
No, I understand that, but when you use the word including, that means there could be other types of documents or other types of bids that aren't, that aren't approved. That's the way I read it.
Understood. Section two of the resolution specifically lists only contracts that are over the statewide minimum purchase amount.
That have to be approved by the county commissioner.
Correct.
Okay, so any, any other comment? Thank you for saving us all the paperwork, things that we will be voting on anyway, so it's appreciated. I'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Resolution six, commissioners' appointments of Michael Tavar and I O Patterson to Montgomery County Community College Board of Trustees. Is there a motion that Michael Tavar and I O Patterson be appointed as commissioners' representatives to the Montgomery County Board of Trustees, serving at the pleasure of the county commissioners, and in accordance with the current duly-adopted bylaws?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Wynder. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I will.
You changed it up on me.
I will second that. Is there any board comment?
I just have a quick comment. I didn't see any information regarding these two individuals until sometime yesterday. These positions are very important. These are positions that we're not reappointing, but we're actually adding. I don't know who they are. I wasn't even given the opportunity to talk with them, to really understand why and what they bring to the Montgomery County Community College Board. And I, you know, so this thing seems like it just kind of popped up with these two names. We, to, through our last meeting, when we appointed Commissioner Wynder to the county commissioner, Montgomery County Community College, which was fine, because I think she'll do really good work there, but we held back on these other positions because we didn't know who we were going to appoint or what was going on. And then all of a sudden, yesterday, this was added, and I got some brief information regarding these two individuals. I, I, I won't, and I'm moving forward. I can't support stuff that just gets dumped. I mentioned this before, I'm not going to support things that are just dumped on me 24 hours before a meeting, without having the opportunity to fully vet or look through it. You know, what's really interesting is that, you know, months ago, I put forward an individual to be on the workforce development team, who was an executive director at one of our career centers in Montgomery County, one of our school district career centers, which is formerly known as vocational schools. And that goes, that went nowhere. This individual is extremely qualified, and we just, nothing happens. But then again, I get dumped, these things got dumped on me yesterday.
What I would just say is that, if you, you know, the, I don't know who you're talking about, and appointments are decisions that we have to vote on as a board, so we can't directly, you know, communicate about them, and so we have to work through staff to make recommendations, so anyone you have, I would recommend that you, you know, send Colleen or Thomas.
I have done that multiple times.
Okay, so I, I, you know, I've asked the staff to be very comprehensive in terms of coming up with the broad list of vacancies and the list of potential folks who have applied, and I know that's an ongoing process. I would always like things earlier myself, but, you know, the point is heard. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion passes. We'll move on to the personnel list. Is Marty Moss available?
Morning, commissioners. We should have in front of you a final copy of the commissioners' department personnel list. It's a three-page document, dated January 22, 2025, at a timestamp of 3/56. These transactions have been reviewed, but management are not presented for report consideration.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the January 23, 2025 personnel presentation as given by Mr. Marty Moss. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment?
So, again, I'm going to make a comment on this list of personnel items. I got the most up-to-date, recent version about half hour before the meeting. So I had no opportunity to review it, unless what was said to me was not accurate, it was different draft modes, and I can operate where these lists are put in front of me 30 minutes before the meeting and say, this is our final version. And again, there's some key positions on here that we're hiring that I know nothing about, and this is, this is. about, and this is, this is not a way to operate, especially a county of almost 3,000 employees. If it's expected for me to vote, I need the information given to me in a timely fashion and given to courtesy to ask questions about specific individuals as well that are on this list when we're hiring them.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to section five, the advertisement of bids and RFPs. Exhibit A, I'll make a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached exhibit A. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Said by Commissioner Wynder. Is there any board comment? I will just comment on one point. RFP three, it's an RFP on behalf of Drug and Alcohol Services and HHS for Youth Leadership, and we're looking for a qualified provider to coordinate a program called Teen Senate, which engages high school students in a leadership program to build skills through education, training, and development, and it's centered on student wellness. I think what's notable about this is it's being paid for by settlement funds from the Jewel lawsuit, which was filed by our district attorney, who was the first in the state at the time, which is holding a company accountable for targeting teenagers with electronic cigarettes and, you know, fruit flavored electronic cigarettes. So I just want to thank the district attorney for filing that case. It's one that I worked on when I practiced law, and it's great to see that we've had proceeds and are now able to use those funds to support teen wellness. So look forward to, you know, seeing the results of that RFP and getting that program, you know, off the ground. Any other comments? All right, so I'll move to a vote for the advertisement of RFPs. Exhibit A, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to contracts, awards of contract. I'll make a motion to approve contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached exhibit E. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Section K, advertisement of bids, RFPs for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force. Exhibit C, I'll make a motion to approve contract, awards, amendments, and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached exhibit C. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Is there any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And finally, section L, awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force. Exhibit D, I'll make a motion to approve these contracts. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Wynder. Is there any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay. So with that, we'll move on to general public comment. Have any commentators?
Tina Otto.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry, had a little bit of frog in my throat. First off, Happy New Year and Merry Christmas also. It's the first meeting here, so I just hope you all had a very good holiday season and wish you all the best in this coming year. I know there's a leadership change here, so wish all the best with that also. A couple of things. First, just something I just heard for Tom. Thank you. You've talked time and time again how you work to have a three-man team that's apolitical and get stuff done. So my question then for item H and for number six previous to that, did the other two commissioners vote on something that they only got information on 30 minutes before the meeting? That man could answer it, I guess, or you all could, or you could ignore it. I hope not. And if not, you all should be offended that everybody's not getting the same information at the same time. So either you don't know anything about the community college people any more than Tom does, or you are acting on information that wasn't shared for our whole board. That is disrespectful to everybody in this county. You should be more upset than you seem to be. Tom has done an unbelievable job here of working and being honest and forthright and working together, and it seems like one-third of the commissioners may be being mistreated, not only by our elected commissioners, but also by the staff. And I'd like to have an answer to that first. Second one is, an unbelievable event on Monday with inauguration of a new president. We also celebrated Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, a Christian reverend. So Dr. Martin Luther King said he was looking forward to the day when we evaluated his kids and everybody on the content of their character, not the color of their skin. And an unbelievable thing was done by our new president when he signed an executive order ending the illegal discrimination and restoring merit-based opportunity. Nothing honors Dr. Martin Luther King more than that. I want to say, I'm a Marine. Now, I'm a fat Marine right now, but somewhere underneath me is a lean, mean Marine I once was. In 1960s and 70s, there was huge problems in our country, and the Marine Corps solved it. You know how? Everybody was green. We were all green Marines. And from 1977 through 2003, that's how we acted. I'm going to challenge our current Board of Commissioners. You have to get over your addiction to identity politics. We are tired of it. Our country is tired of it. Our community is tired of it. We are all Americans. Black history is American history. That was an unusual little list of history that you brought up today, okay? Because the United States is the greatest country in the history of the world, the most welcoming country in the history of the world, and we should celebrate that and highlight that. We are not perfect, but we are moving towards that every day as Americans.
Thank you for your comment.
So Mr. Rooney, I appreciate your comments, and I'm going to take a moment to respond, and this is not a call and response. You've never walked in my shoes as a, as a black woman, as a woman, as a black woman. You're not, have you raised minority children, right? Have you ever been called the N-word? Have you ever not gotten a job because you're black or because you're a woman? That's my reality, right? You're not.
Please, you're.
You're one of the wealthiest counties in our country. You should be celebrating that unbelievable honor and privilege that you have. I just said this is not going to be a call and response, but when I finish my statement. I'm talking, because I'm responding, well, I'll talk to the, I'll talk to the audience. I'll talk, I'll talk.
If you can take a seat, please.
I don't understand.
You can, you may leave after comments.
So I'm just, so here's my, here's my response, right? And anyone can roll their eyes or have negative comments about what my experience has been life, like living as a black American in this country, what my grandmother's experiences were, what my mother's experiences were. You know, it's oftentimes hard to understand people that don't look like you, that don't pray like you, that don't love like you, to understand someone else's plight, someone else's experience. But I find it highly offensive for you or anyone else to tell me to get over it, right? Because you haven't walked a mile in my shoes.
You've made your.
But I don't, I don't cast judgment on other people. I don't. So did mine. And she called, so did mine. So did mine, but she was caught the N-word on her way to school every day.
Do I have to say, I mean, is that a rule?
Yeah, because the dialogue is done back and forth with each other. So we're going to move on to the next public comment. Okay, thank you.
So, all right, I'll make a comment and just say that I didn't even comment on the, on the inauguration because there's so much to think about in regard to what is happening so rapidly, and my commitment first to the residents of the county is that we will be reviewing every single thing that comes out and how it affects our residents. And, you know, there was a note read about Dr. King in some way of justifying the, what's happening federally right now, and let me tell you, I, I don't think he would appreciate the fact that the Department of Justice was ordered not to enforce a civil rights law, right, that he fought for, and that was passed in the 1960s. So there's a lot of ways that his legacy is thrown around and maybe misused, but certainly the most basic, concrete case, which is that we as a country fought to become the inclusive, welcoming place that was mentioned, and it took black leaders in particular to fight for civil rights and fight for the rights of every individual to live up to their own promise and to be considered and treated equally. And that is not suddenly over. That, there's a lot of work to do, and to bring that back home to Montgomery County is that we are committed to ensuring that everyone who works here, everyone who resides here, is, is treated fairly, is treated equally, regardless of who they are, where they come from, and we know that that doesn't just happen by itself. It requires a commitment. It has required activist legislation, and there's work that we're going to continue to do, and you'll hear more about it in the coming weeks to share that commitment. We have another commentator? Okay. So we have one public commentator. Okay, go ahead.
That was a mistake. It was an honest mistake. You may not yell out from your seat. You may not yell out from your seat.
Is David Morgan?
Regarding the newsflash I mentioned from Bucks County, goals they have in trying to keep taxes low for our residents include offloading costly assets and also merging departments. And we had in the last meeting, the salary board, many appointees, and they were not, as pointed to by DeBello's comments, they were not fully aware of what these positions were. Something like five solicitor positions, and when I see Mr. Fields come in, he seems not to be overburdened, not taking too many drinks of water from long lectures about law, that he would need, we would need five more solicitors. I remember one time the county had about 35 solicitors to be consulted in the fall, mentioned in the minutes. So I wonder if we should be spending so much, and also for the DEI positions mentioned in the last salary board. So these costs affect our overall taxes, and I'd like to have us keep in mind how Bucks County kept theirs at zero last year, and zero was two years ago, and only 6% in the last three years. Also, related to have enough notice, the agenda doesn't appear on the website until about 24 hours before. And when I saw the last agenda, it was saying ordinance, authorization for issuance of general bond obligations. Does not mention Mr. Dorton's name, nor the two guests that were here at the meeting, and it's, if people want to comment that this is a large burden we're going to face of 100-plus million dollars of spending, which has got to be financed with debt financing, then we should know about that clearly. Also, the fact that this late notice is a kind of a trend that we really know ahead of time for our participation in the meeting, and I thank Mr. DeBello for his mentioning that. That's a concern of mine. I also thank Mr. DeBello for voting against the tax increase, which I calculate to be closer to 10% based on line A. You look at the mills on line A, your tax bills. So that also was reflected in Mr. DeBello's vote against the salary board hires, which are up about $100,000 plus pension and health benefits. So we're going to carry more from these surprise notifications. That, one about the bond, and one about these positions. So I like to have us really keep in mind that so that we can keep our taxes low and help the public. Now, I noticed my picture is in the report here playing violin. What a pleasant surprise. I'm glad the bows go on the string. I didn't have a big error there. This was for Mother's Day, because mothers are so important, and I know I have a heart for the unborn children. As you know, we want to keep them included in our considerations, and I think the county can do so much with adoption. After this.
Thank you for your comment.
For you've met adoption. Courthouse meeting in November, that was really good. Saw picture in the front page of the reporter, and.
Appreciate your comment. Thank you. Thank you.
Tony Patrick.
Tony Patrick from Montgomery Township. First, I want to say thank you. I know you guys have a hard job up there, and one day you'll, you'll look back at this and say, you know, I did my best. That's all you can do, is all you can do. But I want to say a prayer, because I want to, I want to pull Jesus into this room. This is important, that we all have a higher power. So I want to thank Jesus for loving you, the people here that have gathered in His name, and thank Martin Luther King. He was forefront to our beginnings in the black community. He, in my mind, was a savior. I was poor, born a poor white girl, so I've been called the N-word, and it has nothing to do with my skin color. So I wanted to say that first, but thank you again. So this is our county settlement covenant, and I will be giving you a copy of it. It was recorded in Bucks County Courthouse. It's a pre-annual. We, the 868,000-plus residents of Montgomery County, are sovereign people living on the land of Montgomery County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, a free and independent state in order to live together in harmony under common law of the Almighty Creator, to facilitate the avoidance of disputes, to facilitate the quick settlement of disputes which might arise to provide for organized defense of liberty, life, and private property, to protect and administer public property for the benefit of the inhabitants, and to make certain limited agreements with our settlement of sovereign people for mutual benefit or gain common accord and recognition the following notice.
Hi, my name is Rita Seville.
Who's next? Is there a list?
Yes, Rita Seville.
Can you state where your township?
Douglas Township.
Thank you.
Notice, date October 30th, 2024. Comes now inhabitants of the Montgomery County by absolute writ of consent, and with absolute resolve reboot all corporate authority. And with absolute revolve, we bought, we've got all corporate authority. County Settlement Covenant in Montgomery County. Original Assembly and Library of Records on date August 20th, 2024. Gives this county settlement announcement, Montgomery County Settlement Covenant, and in harmony with all 60, 70 counties we find.
Sharon Hilfordy.
Sharon Hilfordy of our Providence. Article one, by Almighty God granting us freedom by unhumanist decree, the local people in the local peaceful lawful assembly and the settlement covenant in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, a free and independent state, a member with other free independent states also known as the Republic for the United States of America, set forth the following affirmations. Section one, local people.
Excuse me. How does this pertain to the county? County business, no, the county business. What is before this report? It has to be germane to what, the business that is presented to this board.
Please continue, Sharon.
Just, can you answer that question? I, I don't really understand how this is relevant to the business of that.
This is a county settlement covenant.
Can you explain what that?
Under the Republic of the United States of America.
Do you know what that is?
I'm not sure how this pertains to the county. I'm not sure how this pertains to the county. No.
What is, what is it?
It's our settlement that we are taking the county back from your corporation that is vulnerable, back to the republic. That was made in eighteen seventy-one.
Are we going back that far, to eighteen seventy-one?
So just keep in mind, it's a public comment, and you got to listen to this.
And we have got a direct public comment, and it-
So I actually, can you mind if I answer? I don't think we have authority to dissolve the county and give it to whatever this is. You might have to go to the state legislature for that.
Just let them read it. We're talking more about it. Just read it, and so we move on.
Section one, local people and family of man and woman centered in Almighty God, live on a local land and use rights of way in people jurisdiction in grace affirmed by the authority of the Ununanimous Declaration of Independence circa seventeen seventy-six, and the spelled rights Articles Fifth, Seventh, Ninth, Tenth, Eleventh circa seventeen eighty-seven to seventeen ninety-one, revised twenty twenty-four. November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and beyond, beyond the reach of predator others, and also living in friendship in the peace treaty circa seventeen eighty-nine to seventeen ninety-one, and beyond, beyond the reach affirmed by the Pennsylvania Constitution circa seventeen seventy-six and Declaration of Rights Four, Ten, and Sixteen, as well as the plan or frame of government in Sec. Ten, and including the county settlement of Montgomery County in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, a free and independent state circa Sept. twenty twenty-four.
Okay, that will be the last comment on that topic. That will be the last comment on that topic. It is completely irrelevant to the county business. If you want to go advocate to some other body, maybe the state legislature, it's unclear what this, what this is. But we can't vote on anything relevant to what you're talking about. The purpose, we received the comments. It's just not relevant. It's- I'm willing, can you, can you raise a solicitor on this topic?
Yes, yeah. Our guidelines require that what you are offering as public comment is germane to county business, the business of this board. The solicitor, the solicitor determines what is germane to this board's business. This is not germane. If you would like, you can have your comments emailed to our, our board secretary, or you can hand them to her now.
Well, based on what they're reading, it is germane to county business. I don't know, I'm not sure what the end result is, but it is germane to county business.
How is that?
Because, I mean, it's a, it's a resolution that they're reading, to read onto record. That's part of- Right, that's what it is. It's all about putting on the record what they're reading, and it is county business. So it's-
Is the desire to put something on a record relevant to whether it's germane or not?
No, I mean, if you just, if you could say anything that's on the record.
Germane to county business is very subjective. So what they're referring to is subjective of your opinion, and it has nothing to do with, I mean, I get what, I understand now what they're talking about. And it is germane to county business. What, what we would do in the future, I don't know. I'm not making a decision one way or the other, but it is germane to county business.
So-
You are the chair.
I will, I am, I will advise, and here's the reason this is relevant. I mean, anyone can come here and use this public comment as a platform, and really abuse the platform to, for example, let's say they want to come up and pitch their product, right? Or let's say they want to say they're running for an office, and they want to talk about themselves. We have to cut those people off, because it's not relevant to a meeting in which we're making decisions. So there are many people who are passionate about lots of different issues within the borders of the county. If it doesn't actually have to be relevant to what we're doing, the business we're conducting as a Board of Commissioners, this is not the place to talk about it.
The unfortunate thing is, all this conversation, it would have been done.
Right, but it's about setting, it's about adhering to the clear-
But Tom, he's the chair, and he's saying that he wants to move on from the comment. The fact that there's this debate, and there's this, this lack of, like, respect in terms of the things that he is saying, that he doesn't want to do, right?
It doesn't mean anything.
But, but he said, we're done with this comment.
But it's not-
Can we be done?
The solicitor has also made that-
What the solicitor's saying-
Is there anybody else that is not commenting? Subject is not C.S.?
There's one person that didn't want a comment, and that's Karen Sue Simpson. I'm not sure what her comments in reference to.
I-
And that's, that's the last.
All right, so that's the last comment on that topic. And again, you can advocate for the issue that you're talking about in many, many different forms, publicly. You could, you know, host an event. You could do that. This is just a meeting where we conduct business, and there's nothing we can do about the topic you're talking about. So we've got to move on. So is there any other comments? Okay, so with that, are there any closing commissioner comments?
I just got a couple real quick ones. Last night, I was able to attend the EMS study that the county did over the last year review. I know there was one last night, and there was one this morning. So I went to the one last night. A lot of work went into that. There was probably close to twenty different EMS organizations throughout Montgomery County that were there. It was a good meeting. We definitely, there's still work to do, but the message is, is that within Montgomery County, and not only Montgomery County, but within the state of Pennsylvania and nationally, we have an EMS problem. And it's, it's, we're losing, every day we lose more and more people that don't go into that field. And what we're trying to avoid at some point in time is when they make that call to nine-one-one, and no one's there to come. So there was, there was good suggestions last night, great questions, but it's just a start, and we have a ways to go. But it's definitely something that, that we, that we need to do. And lastly, with that, it was, it was talked about, which was right, that the county doesn't have the authority to basically go and create an authority over all EMSs within municipalities in Montgomery County. But what I mentioned last night is maybe what we need to do is add to our, the information that we've gathered, and reach out to each of the municipalities, because they can't actually give the county permission to form an authority to work with EMS organizations throughout the county. So I'm not saying that that's, will be the end result, but I personally think that we should, where the study kind of stopped, is that we should go and ask each of the municipalities, the sixty-two municipalities, their position on the county putting an authority in place. There's a lot of work that would have to happen after that, but it's just a starting point, because we'll be really curious to see what we get back. But it is, it is something that we have to address, and we have to address it sooner than later. Two other things real quick. I did have a meeting with Camp Rainbow people. I've mentioned this multiple times. I think that we have some hard money that we could utilize. It's, for those familiar with Camp Rainbow, or not Camp, not familiar with Camp Rainbow, it is property owned by the county that is used by a group that provides a camp, summer camp, to the less fortunate kids in Montgomery County. I think, a lot of, yeah, a lot of people went there. It's, it's definitely a service that we provide, working with this organization. It's something, the camp is in dire need of renovations, but we spend a lot of money here in Montgomery County, as Mr. Winer points out. And, but this is something that I think that, as commissioners, we really, really need to harness and work out there, and put this facility back to the state that it needs to be in, to provide this environment for these less unfortunate kids that come to some, come from more of our depressed areas in Montgomery County, where parents don't have the ability to send them to camp to summer. And then lastly, I noticed that we added a flag behind me. Not really sure why, but I'm assuming that we just ran out of time to add the veterans' flag, EMS flag, the police flag, all those other flags, you know, to, if we're going to represent a group, we should be representing, I've said this last year, if we're representing groups, we should represent all groups. Not sure why, there's just one here. Was not aware of it until I came and sat down. I don't have an issue with the flag, don't get me wrong, but if we're representing a group, we should make sure that we represent all the groups that have done, and one of the things I've said numerous times, that gets the least amount of our respect as veterans, and that's the flag that should be hiding behind us, because if it wasn't for our veterans, no flags would be here. Keep that in mind. So I just want to put that out there.
Absolutely. And look, Commissioner Winer and I raised the veterans' flag. I think you were at a Trump rally event when that was happening, but we were very proud to
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about one flag behind me.
Right, but I wouldn't imply that we haven't supported veterans who raised that flag. We've done that.
I didn't say that.
But go ahead.
I didn't, I didn't say that, and I didn't imply that. All I'm saying is that if we're going to put one flag behind me, that we should be representing all the group's flags.
Then let's order a flag. Let's order a veterans' flag, because no one on this board does not support our veterans. So my, my closing comments are a couple of things. Appreciate everybody coming to be here. Recognize that, you know, with the change of the guard, the tensions are certainly high. And depending on your own experiences, you might be more affected than others. But what I would say is, Mr. Chairman, I would ask, you know, when we ushered in a new administration in 2024, I set a standard for how people would behave coming into our boardroom. And I would continue to advocate to make sure that we all, including us as commissioners, behave in a manner that is thoughtful, respectful, even when we don't agree. And what I've seen kind of transpire today, even in my own emotions, is not the best of Montgomery County. And so I would ask us, you know, going forward, that we all work to honor that, that there's a level of decorum, and the things that we say in this room affect people in different, different ways, and being cognizant of our friends and neighbors that are here for various reasons, just being thoughtful in how we show up and how we treat each other. When I think about MLK's teaching, his teachings were thrown around a lot today. For somebody that has studied his teachings, studied African-American studies at Penn State, I really pride myself on learning about his teachings, and learning about those that have come before me, so that I would be afforded the life that I live today. The, one of his teacher teachings was really about lifting up our most vulnerable among us. And yes, he did advocate for the poor, right, regardless of skin color. Yes, he did advocate for black and brown people. And so, you know, when we throw around MLK's teachings, let's make sure that we have full understanding of what he meant by those teachings. And let's not be naive that this world is uniquely perfect as it relates to relations, related to all the civil rights that I know I personally, as a black American, hold dear. And so I'm just, and the last thing I'll say is, Commissioner DeBello, you know that I have intentionally worked to be inclusive and include you in things. And I know that my colleague has shared in that responsibility. We are trying to lead an inclusive government. And there's a lot going on when you're running an organization of three thousand people. But I know that I lead with integrity, and I want to make sure that all of us play a role in making this government run effectively for our friends and neighbors. And so I don't want any commissioners to play both sides here, because I have been intentional, and we have been intentional as a board to work together on the many issues that come before us. And so I just have to say that, because I can't sit here and, and Commissioner DeBello, we can, you know, we can talk offline about how do we improve processes, that you're informed. But I don't do things to undermine my colleagues. I do what's right for the residents of Montgomery County. And so I'm not going to play both sides here. We should be running an inclusive government that is thoughtful for all stakeholders in the work that we need to do. So, yeah, that's it. I'm sorry for-
Well, I just want to, I agree with what you're saying. And I didn't, I think what I made my comments earlier about not getting the stuff, I didn't make any accusations. All I said was, I did not get the stuff until today or yesterday, and that was the reason why I would be voting no.
But when you make those comments, then people that are your supporters, and people that are listening to you, then make assumptions about us. So I'm just clearing the air.
I understand. But again, if I'm going to vote no on something, I'm going to state why I'm voting no, not just-
That's fine. I'm just clearing, I don't want any assumptions to be made about how we operate as a board. And so that's why I'm saying what I'm saying.
That's fine.
Yeah, no, I want to just thank you for that. And I think it's really important to reiterate that we, you know, we're committed across the board to, one, just working with integrity and ensuring that what you see is what you get. And I'm not going to convey anything differently on this board versus where, you know, I'm in another setting. And it's, I'm also not going to, you know, if there's something that, that, you know, you have, and obviously, there is, there's a difference here in terms of majority and minority amongst the commissioners. And we had a period, you know, in the past, with the last commissioner who wasn't included in anything, right? So the fact that we're working together is, and you know this more than anyone, significant change from prior administrations in their work with, with the minority commissioner. And, you know, I don't, I think he voted no on literally everything, from, from what I observed. So the fact that we have things that we're working together on is important, and there are absolutely going to be things that we disagree about. There's, you know, any number of matters, but I think we could do so respectfully, and we could do so recognizing that, you know, that, that's going to happen. You say that, you say that more than anyone, so.
Why do? I mean, I say that we work together on most everything. Again, I wasn't, I didn't say anything disrespectful today. I have to come back through all my comments, and even when I talked about Martin Luther King, I said that he was a great man, and there's a lot to learn and understand what he stood for and what he did. So I think I was reiterating, Commissioner Winer, what you were saying. I didn't say anything disrespectful to anybody. I just pointed out, there was two areas that I voted no, and I, and I will always, I will always make, state the reasons why I'm voting no, to be clear. I didn't, I just want to make sure again that I didn't say, oh, Commissioner McKeesh is keeping stuff from me, and that's, I didn't say any of that. All I said was, I just got information for whatever reason.
It's implied, Tom. Come on, let's, like, it's implied. So this is, this is the thing. I, I don't apologize for what you're saying. Like, I appreciate what you said about MLK. And trust me, I appreciate, you know, some of the things that we've done on Pride, and Veterans, and all that good stuff. But like, we have a responsibility as leaders, right? When we say things, people take them as, as fact, right? And so all I'm doing in my response is just clarifying, so that there's, there's nothing, you know, there's nothing to see here, that we are trying to run an inclusive government. And we're not always going to agree. We're not always going to agree on board appointments. We're not always going to agree on DEI efforts, right? And we can talk about that and be respectful of each other's opinion. But like, I also have a responsibility, if something is said, right, and my experience is different, that's, that's all I'm doing.
Well, so everybody that knows me or doesn't know me moving forward, I never imply anything. I will sit here and be very specific on something that I feel I need to bring up. And if I want to apply something, I don't do it subliminally. I would come right out and say that this didn't happen because, or they didn't, I didn't say any of that. But believe me- believe me when I tell you, and I hold back a lot, because I don't apply nothing, but I guarantee you, moving forward, I don't apply. So if I'm going to say something, I say it. So there's never any subliminal messages, or I'm not implying anything. I will just state the facts of why I'm not supporting something, and I move on.
All right. Are we done with this? I'm going to make one reminder, which is very important to all of us, which is that we, this is going to be a throwback, so we have an election this year, and I want to stress the importance of voting local and letting people know that there are positions, judge of elections and inspector of elections that are up, and, you know, we have about 2,700 poll workers, is that, I think? I've said, yeah, it's been a while since I've said that number.
It's up there?
Yes. And all are essential to doing the work, making sure that people can cast their ballots successfully across our 436 precincts in the county, and there are a number of positions open, judge of elections, inspector of elections, and the petition, speculation, and final period for the upcoming primary will be February 18th to March 11th. So if you want to run for those positions, please keep that in mind, it's coming up pretty soon. And, you know, we want to make sure that we have, you know, robust, you know, group of poll workers that can support all the needs that we have across the county and every one of those precincts. So please look into that, Call of Honor services, or come by the office if you have any questions on how to, how to participate. And if that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You applying, the meeting's coming to an end?
Yes. I imply all.
I'm sorry.
I will, I will.
I'm just adding a little levity.
I will move to adjourn the January 23rd meeting of Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second? Second. Any public, any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned, we move on.